We'll ask everyone to stand. And then it's Ms. Sanders, she'll open us up with a word of prayer and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, it's been again one more time asking you to kind of be in our midst today. Lord, that everything might be done in decency and order and we might be able to move our town along. Be with those that are sick and afflicted, those that may not be here for whatever reason tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance, through the God of the United States of America. In the Republic, for which we're saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Councilwoman Sanders.
Present.
Councilwoman Fletcher. Councilwoman Dickers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dowdy.
Present.
Mayor Fletcher.
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders here, Attorney King here. First order of business is with the passing of Kay Asbury. We've got a new council member consideration for tonight. And we made some action on. And here tonight with us and who I've got here to actually appoint after, you know, kind of holding some discussion. Is Michael Woody, standing right or sitting right here in front of us. And at this time, we would need to entertain a motion if that is in agreements with everybody here. So I'm needing a motion to accept Michael Woody as a town council member for the town of Bell. To run through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Melody, do we have a second? Second by Mark. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered, so. Michael, if you'll stand up and come right here and right in front of me, just raise your right hand. I am Michael Woody.
I am Michael Woody.
Who has been appointed to the office.
Who's been appointed to the office.
Of town council, the town of Bell.
Of town council, the town of Bell.
Canal County.
Canal County.
West Virginia.
West Virginia.
Do solemnly.
Do solemnly.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I will truly.
I will truly.
And faithfully discharge all the duties.
And faithfully discharge all the duties.
Of said office.
Of said office.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
To commence effective April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
To commence effective April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Appreciate the thank you there. Thank you for a choice, thank you.
We'll take a seat right over there and I think John's got a, he's got a packet there for you.
And you will have a main tag next month.
Yeah, we've got a main tag coming. And before we leave tonight, we'll need to get you to sign this form for me.
Perfect, do that.
Take care of short. All right. So and I think Melody, you might help him get started and try to show him, you know, our agenda and all that. So we've got a lot of, a lot of stuff here tonight, so. All righty, first thing on the agenda then is the approval of the minutes. We've got two that we need to approve tonight, March fifth was the finance committee minutes. And then we've got the March nineteenth regular council meeting minutes. So I think the finance committee was behind the regimen. Think the finance committee's pretty short and sweet and so someone want to make a motion that we approve the finance committee?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Melody, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jacob, all those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered. All righty, March nineteenth, the regular minutes.
Michael, when you read through these, you gotta check them out spell. I'm typing as quick as I can.
We're picking up.
Michael, effective after tonight, we'll actually get that package to you early.
Okay.
Tuesday done, three days ahead of time.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Friday. Friday morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll expect you to read it all and come in here and say, hey, this is wrong or whatever.
Spell check.
Yeah.
I'll highlight everything from now. You're going to have a lot of highlighters.
Have you already found one?
Page three. Above items from attorney, three lines up. That should be mentioned to him that he could get to the town, not that to the town. We're not allowed to that anymore.
No, no, I didn't do that.
And the other is correct, but we did do it, so we just need eleven minutes tonight that we move the yard sale.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I knew you were gonna get the test tomorrow.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll leave that here for now and then we'll do it tonight's meeting. That and the festival.
Yeah.
And the festival brochure.
Yeah, I see that.
All right, anything else?
No, go ahead and make a motion to accept them.
Okay, motion by Jacob to accept them with the one correction. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Melody, all those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered, all right. Next thing we've got is the receiving the March two thousand twenty-four financial statements, John.
Yeah, if you look on the front page, we have the income for the month of a hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Most of that was built up of the mostly finalization of the adverbarium. So if you look, we've already collected a little bit more than what we projected. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're close to becoming, we're thirteen thousand dollars away. So we're very close to actually collecting all that income. Our expenses for the month were fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, leaving us a surplus for the month. Fifty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and three cents. If you look through, I mean, I normally try to go through and look at anything down the ordinary other than just the, all the insurance and taxes. I mean, there's really nothing out there. But if you have any questions, you will see on the vendor checks report, Sedaris, the speaker with paid forward purchase at council, above and on. Other than that, there's really nothing out there. But if you have any questions.
Any questions at all?
We, we did make those budget. The financial, financials do represent the budget changes. Then you all agreed on last month and it's already been sent to the state auditor's office and approved, so that is already made, so. Also, last month. On page. Two of the general fund expenditures report, we talked about this last month. This has been completed, but your report don't show that. So if you look on page two, under the city auditor, it still shows contributions to community. Under the city auditor, that should be down one of the contributions to communities and authorities. If you look at the account number, it is a four-two-four account number. Auditor's a four-one-eight, so Stuart has moved that down. Next month, you'll see that change, I didn't reprint everything. So there was no line item under custodial for materials and supplies. That's what was being used for elections, that's now been created and taken care of as well. So that'll show up on the next statement next month as well, so.
Any questions about the financials? If not, we'll entertain a motion that we accept the March twenty-four financial statements as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Mark, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered. All righty, old business, John, we're going to go into the hearing of any objections and laying of the levy order that we need to set tonight.
So last month, we approved the budgets for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. And we did present the levy order and rate sheet that you had in front of you. Basically, this is a hearing of any objections, if there's any objections from the public or from council to the laying of the levy. The levy rate is twelve point two six, which is actually down from previous years of twelve and a half. So the levy rate is actually less than what has been in previous years. That has been posted throughout town. If there's any questions, objections, concerns.
Any questions, that's what we passed with the budget last month. Any questions or any comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion that we approve the setting of the levy.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Jacob, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. And we will do a poll vote, so Michael, it's yes or no.
Yes.
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 Melody, yes, John, yes.
Yes, sir.
Mark, Jacob.
Yes.
And all of them, yes. So all the yeses. So the motion will carry. And we'll send that back in to the state auditor's office for the approval and everything there. Next old business is early election held at Bell Town Hall beginning May first. So we do have that coming forward very soon. And so in the next couple of weeks, they will come in and change locks and do all that on the middle office over here. That we just had the FEMA people in and everything else, so we'll.
New business.
We'll be getting that changed so that the early election people will have that to come in and actually get that together, so.
And it's May first.
Through, May first through the.
May first to the eleventh?
Yeah. It's the Saturday before the election.
And the, what's the hours?
Eight to.
Five, I think.
Eight to five weekday. Nine to eight-four or something on Saturday, I'll get that sent out.
It's on the, no, it's on the door.
Yeah, it's on the door out there, but I didn't even grab a copy of mine. Well, wait a minute, you know what, sorry. Let me, let me come back here real quick.
We normally have two Saturdays.
Yeah, there is, Saturday, May fourth and Saturday, May eleventh. It'll be from eight-thirty AM to five-fifteen. And then the weekdays, May first through Friday, May eleventh, and they'll be here from seven-thirty AM until five-fifteen PM.
What was Saturday on the time, I'm sorry?
The Saturday times, Saturday is nine to five is actually what they'll be open. And Friday, Monday through Friday will be eight AM to five PM. So all that was on here and they. Had that and didn't even get it out. So, so they're geared up, ready to go. We are, I think, the only one on the eastern end of Canal County, so anybody needs to vote, send them up here to vote. And we'll go from there. Uh, new business, I've got FEMA on here, they expressed the appreciation for the use of the building. For disaster funding for the residents. They actually, the, the people that came in, they had one of the house in Canal County was done right here at Bell Town Hall. So the hospital ward. So they had two of the house, one was here, one was over in Winifred, so. So, but they did express appreciation for the use of the building. I did treat them on my nickel lunch on the last day they were here. And so, and so they thoroughly enjoyed being here with us, took pictures with us and everything else. And said if they'd ever come back, they'd love to show up right here on our doorstep, so.
One of them came to bingo.
Yeah, yeah, one came to bingo, well, the one came to the, first one that dances. Yeah. And their club, so. So it was real good having them here and I think they were all good people and everything else. Uh, the Canal County Commission Damage Assessment Media Release, you've got that in your packet there. Everybody did, we did get this through Canal County Commission.
It's on the front door for residents.
And, but they are going out right now doing storm damage assessments. You can actually scan the QR code and put anything in. I think from what we've done here through city hall and the cleanup people and our street department and all that. I don't think we had a lot of problems here that we've been called on or anything like that, so. Adam and the guys been going out picking up sticks and cleaning everything up, they've done some mowing. Still have a little bit more to go if it ever stop raining, so. But we are working on it. And then you will see on that back page, you know, the different things, you know, if you did need public assistance. You know, if something was tore up or anything like that, so. So like John said, it is out here on the doors, so, you know, we got that and it's set up and ready to go there, so. Next thing is Greater, or the Canal County Cleanup, it will be this Saturday, April twentieth, from eight to four over behind the Go Mark in Cabin Creek. So we, we do supply garbage truck on those days for the cleanups around the county. So we'll have two people over there with our garbage truck and they've gone to a couple already, so. So we've, we do help them with that through the Canal County Planning Board, so. The next thing we have is. Let me just give you all, let me kind of see the thing. And keep the whole thing, yeah, whole package. All right, and right here, if you will go to the, and I'm sorry, it's out of order, the fourth page. You'll see the Greater Canal Valley Foundation. And I brought this up that myself and the representatives and Rick had gone down and actually gone with the Greater Canal Valley Foundation. And. You found yours, Melody? Okay, we've gone down and applied for the grant through the Greater Canal Valley Foundation. And it was for the planning about putting in the streetlights through Bell, the Old Town Street Lights. And so they did approve. They did approve us a grant of four thousand dollars to help out with the planning. So, so they did send me a letter and I signed off on it and everything, sent that back. So we will be getting a four thousand dollar stipend for that to help us with the planning and getting that started to actually hopefully one of these days to see the old lights through Bell. And so, so we do have that. And so that's, that's the first thing I've got. The next thing that you see on there, on, under letter E, is a new police cruiser, bid on the state contract to replace the two thousand eighteen cruiser. And the use on it to pay for this would be the ARP funds and action required. And there's a letter in here from Stevens Auto. And Michael, you got yours right there, there's yours. It's in that, it's in that group of stuff, I'm sorry, I did all that and I was trying to give you a little bit of everything that I had. This is for a new police car, it is under the state bid, so that's the way we've always purchased our cars. And you'll see that this would be a two thousand twenty-five police SUV, all-wheel drive, kind of same thing what we've got, you know, today. The V-six engine, ten-speed transmissions, wiring kits, everything that's, that's in a police package. On the back page here, the total quote is forty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars. So we would need a, a motion and a second that normally would come out of our general funds. We do have funds in the ARP funds, so recommending to take that out of the ARP funds. So we would need a motion and a second to go ahead and place that order.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Melody, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered, okay. The next order of this.
How many times has that been shot?
Uh, hell, ain't quite a bit, yeah. And, but, you know, in about every four years or so, we've kind of, you know, changed the cars out. This one's gone a little bit longer than an eighteen. And, but, you know, we just didn't have the, the funds that we had before. To be able to, be able to take care of that and get it taken care of on page four. So it's a good thing to go ahead and get that done. Next order of business is the one that we had at the table last month because we did not have funds in our contribution account. We did increase that amount last month to the state auditor's office. So we now have funds in our contribution account that we could give out. This was the robotics class and this was at Cedar Grove Elementary. And John, refresh our memory, what, what did we do on the other robotics classes?
Two fifty? I, I'm, I'm not sure.
I think something like that.
Yeah, two fifty is what we gave them for.
So we want to do the same for Cedar Grove, what's your pleasure?
I, I would. Sound bad. I, I would think we should probably do a little less.
Okay.
And we're talking about a, another town, another town around us that can actually donate as well. What we've donated before is actually affected by our children, I'm not sure, I'm not saying we shouldn't give it all. But I, I don't know if I would recommend two fifty.
How about one fifty?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I can go two fifty if that's what you all agree upon, I just think, I'm not saying that Cedar Grove Elementary School don't, doesn't deserve it. I'm just saying that it doesn't pull from ours too.
Cedar Grove, Glasgow, I mean, they're right there in our community, they probably give them some money too.
That's what I'm saying, they probably give them money too, so.
I know they're doing a hot dog sale in Rand on Saturday. For a couple of these students and everything, but I'm good with whatever.
Am I, am I thinking about this wrong, everybody?
No, I mean, I agree, I kind of agree. I mean, I think that we should look at our close community schools first. I'm not saying we shouldn't give any, but I think we should, you know, because we've got a lot coming up here and even there's a lot's coming up, it's, I, I say a hundred dollars.
A hundred, okay. Somebody want to, you want to put that in form of a motion?
Put it in a form that we can.
Okay, got a motion that we give Cedar Grove a school donation for robotics class, one hundred dollars, do we have a second?
I'll say. I'll say.
Okay, second by John. And all those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered. Thank you all very much, okay. And then we've got a DuPont Middle School Archery. I think that's in your packet there too.
Now, I will say something about them, they did participate in our festival last year and they, I mean.
Yep.
They are really.
Well, and it does pull from our community as well.
Right.
All righty, what, what's the pleasure there? Do you want?
Well, do you think the, I mean, the robotic, the robotics team is actually.
No, this is.
A club, so to speak, as is the. As is the archery program.
Right. And I think there's nobody here from the archery program, sorry.
I'll just, I'll go ahead and make a motion for two fifty, like we've done with local groups.
All right, Jacob, has got a motion on the floor for two fifty?
I'll second.
Second by Melody. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Let me go ahead and, in the packet I gave you, we have Canal Central Little League, just came in. And yet again, they're asking for money, I know we did something this past year for Canal Central Little League. We told us there's Bell kids into this, Cedar Grove, Glasgow, Cross River and everything else. They've got the different sponsors there and they've got one seventy-five, they've got a hundred, they've got three fifty, they've got five hundred. What's the pleasure there? I think people love the baseball side, so.
What age groups are this, is there a certain age group?
Yeah, I think, shoot, they're all the way from small guys up to senior leaders, yep. Yeah, they got a lot of, a lot of people go through this. Wade Wolfenberger used to be a big supporter of this and, and Wade's actually now kind of in some bad health and I talked to him the other day.
Well, I mean, I've participated in a lot of different areas that they played, you know, the baseball and softball and people and stuff. And it is a good program.
What if we done the one seventy-five, which is the company banner?
Had worked. We'll put that in form of a motion.
I, I'll make a motion that we donate a hundred seventy-five dollars, which is what one of the requests is for company banner.
Okay, got a motion by John, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor, say five, say nine. Any opposed, like sign, so ordered, all righty, we'll take care of that. Approval of invoice, I don't think we have anything to do with John.
Do not.
The next thing is the PEA Active Employee Funds or requirements for us to pay for insurances. And you've got a copy of that, I know John's plugged this into our budget and all that, so John, you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest with you, this is just kind of a reminder, this is nothing we need to vote on. Premiums for PEA for active employees. Uh, premiums for P E A for active employees, um, are increasing fourteen percent. Fourteen percent. If you go back and look on finance report on what we're already paying, um, insurance, it, it just cracks me up that that number just keeps escalating up and up. So, um, I just want you all to see that. Unfortunately, our employees are going to pay a higher premium than we are as well. That has been, um, that is impacted in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget that we looked out for next year. But, um, this is more of a, uh, just an informa- information or informative, um, letter for you. The tax going up effective, um, July first.
P E A is trying to get rid of everybody that's not actually a state.
State of law.
Law state.
Yeah.
Alrighty, well, moving on, uh, the police department report is in your packet.
Oh, that's bad. Yeah, it is, it's nineteen minutes four.
Um. On three, on three sixteen.
On three sixteen?
Uh huh.
Uh huh.
That's starting to become a pretty much every monthly thing, you know?
Well, it's, it's kind of settled down right now, uh, and, and I don't know, I mean, he actually, he hasn't been seen for about a week and I actually just saw him here two days ago. And, uh, so he's actually, uh, been, been a little bit quieter. Uh, and, you know, we had some, a few problems here with him, uh, not only with this, but, uh, billings and stuff like that. And, uh, you know, I think he's got some of that taken care of, but the board is not right. And we had mental health people back here again and they.
Well, and that's what I was gonna say. If you look at three twenty-five, so this was brought up in last month's meeting. Uh, we, the town should be able to do something to resolve this, um, nuisance that we have. And then if you read on three twenty-five, um, our police officer is back with A S P, um, to actually evaluate the possible mental male. Um, when A P S, that's actually A P P S, that's an A S P, which is what they say, but anyway. Uh, they conducted evaluation of the male and stated the male seemed to be fine and would follow up later. And I think that was brought up before that every, that every time that there was actually a, an evaluation that there appears to be nothing wrong, but we all know that they're unfortunate together, so. So it's not a, it's not a matter that the town's not doing anything. It's a matter of you can only do so much.
We've written him a few citations. He has not shown up in court. Uh, don't know that he hasn't been, and, uh, but, um, he has had a couple of citations issued to him and, uh.
I mean, I know that we're doing what we can do, but, I mean, it's kind of scary because we have a lot of kids down in that area.
Yeah, they had bus stops right at the end of the country.
Yep. Well, I know that some residents, um, community residents actually took care of the dog situation and, you know, got all of that.
The dogs are now gone. They have been, uh, uh.
Most of them.
Adopted and they're at another residence now and, uh, you know, we really, I mean, I, I don't know really a lot more that, that we're going to be able to do at least for the present time. And, you know, he had everything pretty well cleaned up a little bit and still hadn't been great, but, uh, now he's gone through. He, uh, beat a generator to death out there. Gas has been spewing all over the place when he was out there beating that. He turned the motorcycle over now twice and beat the motorcycle. And, uh, he's, the two cars that are in the garage, they've been beat up.
Front windows broke out of his house.
Yeah, now he broke out the front window in his house and, uh.
Does he have family? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Has a mother that, um, named Ger.
Mother is now in Florida.
Florida that.
Yeah.
Anybody reach?
Yes, said she doesn't know what, she's tried and she doesn't know how to help and.
Yeah, that's my concern. If he's, and, and he does it periodically, you know, if he's out there beating the motorcycle and somebody, some kid comes by or something and says something to him, is he gonna go off on the kid, you know what I mean?
Now, he also, uh, he had broken out windows and everything across the street. And, uh, he's actually, he was, uh, in court back, uh, April a year ago. The term is up on him paying back the residents across the street some money for all the damage he did over there is out on the first of May. So that resident is actually going to magistrate court to see if by some chance that the magistrate may place him in jail, so. I, I don't think you'll, I don't think you'll take him to jail personally, but I know he's gonna ask.
No, I think.
The guy was not the answer, but maybe they can get help though. The guy needs help, but.
Yeah.
City of Charleston, uh, the irregular A P S has been on. And, and everybody says after they talked to him, he's fine. They gave him a lunch last time they were here and said, I'll see you later. Maybe. But there's no doubt in my mind, you know, can you help us out with this?
Uh, the.
We'll do ours.
Well, I, I, I really just wanted to, uh, my name's Justin, we're the, uh, vice president of Anchor Homes.
Oh, okay.
House of Judgment right down the street.
Yeah. Uh.
What is this, Frank?
Just blue. We, that's who we need to talk to.
Well, that's, that, what you were saying.
Hey, just give us, give us a few minutes. Yeah.
Sure, sure.
I'm sorry, I just didn't know who you were.
Yeah.
You, you, you've probably done this, but have you, have you sought to, uh, have this guy involuntarily committed?
Uh, we have, and we've had city Charleston folks up here. We've had A P S up here. And they come up and talk to him. After they talk to him for fifteen, twenty, twenty-five minutes, they say he's fine. They give him the bars of leave. And like I said, the last time they were here, they gave him a bag for lunch and said, okay, bye-bye. And, uh, said, here's you something to eat, you know?
Okay.
Now, I didn't mean to cut you off because I'm gonna give you some, some gratitude here in a few minutes.
Well, good.
And give you some time to talk.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, you know, so I, I don't know, you know, that's an ongoing saga and we'll see what we can do. And hopefully we get some answers sooner or later, but I just don't know what else is the right thing. I think I know what I'd like to do, but, uh, you know, unfortunately they won't let me do that, so.
Well, you know, these people might be able to help us.
If there's a drug problem, I, I mean, we could at least go down there and talk. I'm a pastor as well, associate pastor, so.
You know, I, I think.
Would it hurt?
Yeah, and I think there has been.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, but the thing is, when these people show up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's almost like the.
Yeah.
Switch is flipped and he's like.
Backing out.
I'm sane, I'm as sane as anything.
I, I've worked, I was a registered nurse for multiple years before this. And unfortunately, if he can say where he's at, who he is and what time it is.
Yep.
You know, he could be crazy as can be, but if he's alert oriented, that ties their hands a little.
They did all that. They asked him and said, you know who the President of the United States is and everything else? He answers all the questions are right and, uh.
But see, if there's been a, a drug issues problem, somebody with that experience might be able to relate a little bit, so.
Yeah.
Hey, that's something we could go and do. I sent myself and a couple of other people down.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll get with you here before we leave tonight. That works for you. Alrighty, uh, next thing on our agenda is the items from the mayor, and I just want to garner a couple of things with you. I gave you all the what is Rick, the what is R I C? And then I also gave you these things, uh, that we've talked to the people already, the simple grants. Uh, so there's a couple of groups of pages. One says what is Rick's? And then the other one starts out what we do and about us up at the top. You got all that, Woody?
I did, yes.
That's the Rick page there. And then you have this one too.
Okay.
Okay, here. You know, how, you think, oh, I'm sorry. Um, no problem. Okay, so. The Regional Intergovernmental Council. This is the, uh, the group that we've got four counties involved in. It's Clay County, it's Boone County, it's Canal County, and it's Putnam County. Uh, the Regional Intergovernmental Council is the, uh, group that I actually chaired the last two years. Uh, made up of all the counties and cities and towns and everything else. Uh, we have never been able to put a little thing together like this, you know, with what does Rick do? Uh, what are some of the grant capabilities and things like that or opportunities? Uh, Tyler Farrell, who's on the front page there on the right-hand side, he is the executive director that we just hired right before I went out as, as the chairman of this group. Uh, we did hire Tyler to come in. Tyler had been down in, um, uh, around in Kansas and down in, uh, Minnesota area and everything else. Came in, this guy is a ball of fire. And, uh, so he actually put this together and, uh, we actually came in a meeting a month ago and, uh, so he had put this together. I got the, uh, the, the opportunity to chair that meeting because the chairman was out of town. And I'm now the first vice chairman, so nobody would even take the position. So I got handed the mic. Uh, but you'll see that we've got grant opportunities, water and sewer, got police on the back page. We've got assistance to firefighters, grant programs, we've got library, uh, libraries, we got demolition. So I was really kind of keen on a lot of these. First of all, we're working on water and sewer, uh, sewer grant right now. And, uh, we actually, for the sanitary board meeting today, we had Thrasher Engineering in here today. And, uh, so, uh, there are new, uh, engineering firm that we just hired. Uh, so we are looking to try to go ahead and do the other streets down on the lower end of Bell to replace the sewer lines and storm drain lines, whatever we have to do down there to get the sewer line fixed up and done, and we'll just move this way. Uh, they are actually, um, and one of the reasons why I bring this up is a couple of months ago, and, and what do you weren't here, but we actually met with the simple grants people on the phone call that day. And they keep, you know, calling, asking, hey, are we gonna move forward with them? What are we gonna do? And, and I really believe that I'd probably recommend that we don't do the simple grants right now and see if we can use Rick to actually, you know, because they don't charge the money that simple grants will charge. Simple grants wanted eighty-five hundred dollars, if you remember from Hong Kong. Uh, Rick doesn't charge that. They charge a minimum fee, which we've always paid a minimum fee for their grants and everything we've gotten, such as the sewer plant and then what we did on West Reynolds Avenue, but it's not eight, eighty-five hundred dollars. And, uh, so I guess the only reason I bring this to you is my recommendation right now is let us explore what Rick can do with us and everything there. And they're actually gonna take care of the project for the lower part of town for the, uh, the sewer and the storm drain work down there. And, uh, because that's who we've always had to take care of it. And they go to the water development board and they actually, they kind of ironed eyes and ears and set that thing up to be able to get grants and everything else for these projects. So I'm just saying right now, I'd like to just tell simple grants, hey, we're not gonna do anything with you right now, and then just bring this up to Rick. We have not formally approved this document here yet, through the Rick board, but we'll have another meeting, uh, coming up in, uh, June, so we'll do a ten. And, uh, but if that's okay with you all, that's, that's the way I'll proceed to, uh, just say forget that right now with simple grants and.
Yeah, we could always.
Come back to them if we have to, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that good with everybody? Just a consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were you able to apply for multiple other rooms?
Uh, we are, but the thing is, the way we're setting right now, unless we, uh, unless we do another rate increase, which, uh, we possibly might have to look at for the sewer side, uh, is right now we're looking probably about a two to two and a half million dollar grant. Uh, two to two and a half million dollars will not do the lower end of Bell. Uh, we're probably looking at seven to eight million dollars to get that done, the whole project. But we can do two or two and a half and then come back in another year and do another one, do another one. And they even said possibly you may have to do this in phases.
Every, every year.
Yeah, so, you know, sooner or later, when, you know, we're out of office, whoever's sitting here, if they want to keep it going, they're going to have to go back and get, you know, another grant, move forward and all that, so. So it's gonna be an ongoing job, uh, you know, and I've brought this up before, triad engineering told us several years ago, to replace all the sewer lines in Bell would be twenty million dollars. That was before COVID. Uh, you know, it's probably forty or fifty million dollars now if we did everyone. And then the other thing that we keep running into problems, and I had Kevin back out here on this, this weekend for about four, four and a half hours, uh, we've got people's lines that, you know, they're clogging up, they've got broken lines. Uh, you know, we'll look and try to camera them and find out, you know, what some of their problems are. And then, you know, we can't really go on personal property and fix those things, so we gotta have the residents do that. And, uh, everybody in Bell still has a lot of terracotta lines. A lot of people have not changed and put new plastic lines and everything else in the yard. Uh, so we know here this past week, our, uh, ultimate goal with our sanitary plan is about three hundred, ten or fifty gallons a day. Uh, this past week, we've been running six to seven hundred thousand gallons a day. Uh, we have actually seen the numbers up over a million gallons in a day with some of these heavy rains. And so we've got, you know, anywhere from three hundred to seven hundred thousand gallons coming through our system. That's plain water, you know, that we've just got holes in our lines and everything else. If you live on the West River View Drive, you know it. You go down those streets, you go like this. And, uh, we've dug up three places on there. We've seen the Y's and we pull, you know, where a Y is, we pull dirt away from that plug. That plug just falls out, you know, so it is not holding anything in there. So water is seeping through all these lines. It's seeping into everybody's property, you know, that have not changed their sewer lines. I've got a house behind me that we, uh, ran the camera up into her yard and right where it goes up underneath her porch, there's a break. Uh, we had another one today talk about, there was another break. And, uh, and that's the thing about a lot of these terracotta lines are just breaking down and breaking. And, and, you know, people's just gonna have to come back and, and do some of this work. And sooner or later, it may be that sanitary board has to go in, run a camera to your property and wait for a big rain. If you see a lot of water coming through that line, we're not going to say, hey, you need to replace your lines. And, uh, yeah, I'm not saying we're there yet, but we're probably closer.
I know they replaced a lot of lines on Sixth Street Alley, can you, did they replace the main line?
Mm-hmm. On Sixth Street Alley or Fifth Street Alley?
Six, well.
The one behind you?
Yeah.
That's Fifth Street Alley.
Fifth Street Alley.
Yeah, yeah, some of that up top was done, some of it down the bottom was not done because we've already been behind Chuck Harris' house a couple of times.
Yeah.
And it's not good there. Uh, we, we've done some new line right there, but and down the street, all that element, so. So I just wanted to report that to you and let you know and, uh, go from there. Uh, just want to mention the Easter egg hunt went great and, uh, everything I think was good there. And, uh, appreciate everybody that came up and helped and got that running and, uh, and all of that.
How many did you have?
About forty.
Yeah, almost fifty, yeah.
With what, two thousand eggs, two thousand?
Yeah, two thousand eggs. And we did, uh, ton of ice. They came up and served all the kids coming with ice and, uh, even some of the parents and everything else. And, uh, so that went well. The Giddians were there giving out bibles, so, uh, uh, so we had the Giddians there passing out bibles to kids and parents and everything, so it worked out pretty good. Uh, the last bingo was, uh, Saturday, uh,
Two seven?
Four, six, two Saturdays ago, and appreciate you all taking my time, my spot there. And, uh, I took a little ride and, uh, ended up, uh, wasn't successful, had a flat tire, had, had some problems with my side by side. And, uh, but made it back home. Had to be towed in by Mickey, uh, so, uh, but, but at least I got home.
We actually had a pretty good round.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of new people we had to save, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wish somebody would've warned me about John's jokes beforehand.
The crowd
They loved it.
The crowd keeps getting better and want to hear my jokes.
Uh, let me roll my pants a little bit. All righty, and then, uh, I'm gonna thank Ms. Blue for coming out early tonight and, and Mark and talking about the beautification ideas and like I said, I need to get with Shirley and, and, uh, you know, trying to, uh, you know, get some ideas and things like that, how we can do it around town and how we can spruce things up. And Shirley, I told them too, you know, if you've got something that you want and, uh, uh, growth-wise or flowers or whatever, let Adam know. And then I'll let him know and he can go to Greens, pick it up. He's done it for the past several years and, uh, that's no problem at all, so, you know, if something that we need. I'll actually give one plug right now for the anchor homes. Uh, you know, this has been great. We're talking about beautification, making sure the town's taken care of, things like that. Can't thank your guys enough, uh, that's in the homes, in both of them. Uh, we live down by Canal Street and, you know, we know over here by, uh, Tenth Street. The house on the other side of your place there was my aunt's house.
Okay.
I've been visiting that house for seventy years.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, but, but anyway, just what your guys have done with snow removal around town, and I told Ms. Blue and them that tonight, uh, with picking up trash, uh, you know, going around with the pickup, uh, facilities and, and buckets and everything else. We know they've been doing some, uh, grass cutting and everything. And then our question to you though tonight is, is, uh, we wanna try to see about people painting some of the places, especially on the front streets of Bell.
Uh, I have a, an, an artist right down the road. I mean, I, I will, I will show you some pictures of the artwork that he does. Talent. I mean, we're, he, I'm, I'm sure this wouldn't be a problem at all there. But, yeah, I mean, we got, I got one guy that's amazing, absolutely amazing down there.
Well, we're talking about even painting buildings, houses, whatever.
That's kinda what I'm looking for.
Around the front part. The other thing is the mural that's down there on the wall.
Yeah.
That's got the map and then, you know, the air like the bell and all that.
Yeah.
We're wanting to kinda take that off and maybe redo that. Uh, been talking about, you know, the old railroad station, things like that, usually here. Uh, but, uh, you know, trying to get some ideas to put there and, uh, and be able to, uh, you know, kinda spruce that up somewhat.
Absolutely.
Uh, we got one of the, uh, plant people, uh, that's inside of the plant, Arthron Chemical, said something about painting, uh, the walls down there where you come out the other pass.
Absolutely.
And, uh, they wanted to put their, you know, symbols on it and everything else. I told them, you paint it, you put symbols, whatever you want on it.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, but, uh, you know, so that's something that we probably, maybe before you leave, we get maybe some business cards and do that. And, uh, we'd be glad to do that and, uh, see how you can help us out there, especially with the workers, you know. And, uh, we've got some places through Bell that just looks kinda dingy and, and everything. Uh, Ms. Blue sent letters to everybody last year. Uh, didn't get very many responses, but, uh, you know, maybe we need to do a knock on the door campaign or something. But whatever we can do to actually get it, get it going there.
That's mostly the reason I'm up here tonight. That, that works out really well, so, absolutely.
But that's, uh, you know, kinds of things that, that we wanna try to do and, you know, what we've been trying to do, but it never, you know, seems like everything will fall into place. But maybe if you got an artist, it might fall into place, you know.
You'll be, I, I'm proud of that work, so I'm sure you'll be as well.
Uh, two more things and I'll be done. Uh, I got this, uh, I got this in the mail. Uh, came in, it's got a dog taking a little dump. Uh, and then, uh, it's about ordinances in the town of Bell. I'm gonna go read it, but, um, it says recently, uh, you've sent out a notice regarding the ordinance for barking dogs. Uh, we have come to the conclusion that nothing's gonna be done about this. Therefore, I've taken matters in my own hands. After years of putting up with disrespectful neighbors, letting their dogs continuously bark at all hours of the day and night, I use my electronic ultrasound sound devices. I am encouraging other town offices to do the same. The ordinance is a joke that has never been enforced, which I disagree with that. We've written a couple tickets even this past month. Uh, what about the ordinance keeping dogs on leashes and when taking animals for a walk, that their feces need to be picked up by the owner? We had another ticket, uh, tonight that was that same thing. So we did write a, a, another ticket. Several residents have witnessed dogs being walked and being left to drop their poop wherever they want without being picked up by the owner. These said pet owners are not walking their dogs for exercise. They are walking them so that they can do their business in anyone's yard but their own. Maybe humans need to do business in their own owner's yards. None of these said ordinances are enforced. I guess I want to take this matter into my own hands too. Uh, sign, uh, wouldn't you love to know? So, you know, I, I ended up, I took this and actually, uh, stuck it in my trash bag, uh, trash can. And, uh, you know, if somebody don't wanna tell me who they are, uh, we don't even need to record that or anything. But, um, and, and I think, you know, we in the office, I think we might know who that was. Uh,
I, I will say
Things that were said.
I will say from, you know, I walk my grand puppies. Um, at, at least around, I walk, I don't see a lot of feces left out or dogs, none of which. Um, I, I can tell you that if you ever see us walking, we always got bags, we always pick out. But I know Shannon walks a lot on the road. And I have seen some incidents
There's certain areas.
Closer down to their area, but I don't know about this area. But, I mean, I'm sure there's incidents that it happens. But here's the thing, what frustrates me is the letter states that residents have seen it happen. Well, then why didn't they come and play? Cause that, the, the ordinance can't be adhered to and followed if it's never reported. And, and that, that's, I mean, there's an ordinance against drug use in the state of West Virginia, but there's still drugs being used. So if you see something, say something, but, um, just the fact the matter of saying that I'm gonna take matters in my own hands, I mean, honestly, it's kind of threatening to me, um, as a dog owner. Um, and, um, I don't know, you can't, somebody's kind of opening up, um, opening up a window, they might not wanna climb out of. So, uh, I, I will tell you that as a dog owner who walks our dogs with bags, um, if I'm approached, it, it might not be prudent, so.
Yeah, cause whatever retaliation that they're, you know, saying, it might come back to backfire.
Yeah. I, I, I see a lot of adherence to the ordinance, but there's also, I, I'm not naive. I know there's a lot of law breaking on that ordinance as well, so, um, just the fact the matter, I mean, I see the tickets that are wrote as well. There are tickets wrote for that, but again, you're not gonna catch every one of the incidents.
And if you don't have enough nerve to sign your name,
Yeah.
Why write the letter to start with?
That's why I said I just threw it in the garbage, cause, you know, if somebody don't tell me who they are or whatever, I'm not gonna do anything.
And there's a lot of stray dogs too, so they might not even have owners.
That's true. I have seen a lot, I mean, again, they might be on this end, but at least down on our end, I have seen a lot.
I see.
But you, up here, you're also closer to, um, which are or non, unincorporated areas. So, yeah, possible you could get a lot coming up this way. I mean, you're right at the end.
Mm-hmm, I see it a lot.
You probably do see a lot.
I got one last thing that, uh, I'm gonna bring up, and this is about a municipal service fee. And, uh, the owner of the property is Darryl Campbell. Mr. Campbell is down on Fourth Street. The property was at eight oh two, uh, East Dupont Avenue. It was the old Kokomo's property. Uh, the bill on this property is two thousand, three eighty-seven and thirty-nine cents. Uh, and with this, um, property, uh, they, the girl that lived there, she actually has recently died. So she is deceased. Uh, we can actually put a lien on the property or we can go back to Darryl. I had a conversation with him the other day. And I told him some of the ones that we have taken care of, uh, in a case like this is, um, is charge him for the amount of the twenty dollars and any, uh, fees, penalty fees that come along with that. And then the interest, uh, actually splitting that interest with him like half and half, fifty percent each. Uh, the interest alone is twelve hundred and thirty-five dollars. So it'd be like six hundred and seventeen dollars that we would actually collect from him, six seventeen we would write off. Uh, we haven't collected it anyway. And the last time this lady had paid, uh, was on June fifth of two thousand twenty. Uh, Mr. Campbell says he was not notified by us. Uh, and Lynn and him tells me that they have notified him, but I can't, he said, she said, I don't know which one. You know, if we really did it or not. I said, do we have anything in writing? We have nothing in writing. Uh, my suggestion would be is that we collect from him eleven hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents. And then we collect another seven hundred and fifteen dollars from him. Uh, so about eighteen hundred bucks of this. And then six hundred and seventeen dollars, he would actually just get off of it. Uh, you know, but he would actually be responsible for paying the bill. And so I'm throwing that out there, what's the pleasure of the council?
Well, we've done that before.
We, we have.
And, I mean, you know, somebody's better than nobody.
Yep. And especially, you know, we haven't gotten anything out of this whatsoever. Uh, so would somebody wanna put that in a form of a motion to give us the authority to go ahead and saddle the, uh, the bills plus the penalties, uh, plus, uh, half of the interest amount?
I'll put it in the motion, for translation.
Motion by Melanie.
I'll sit, come on.
Second, uh, Jacob. And all those in favor, same time saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like so? So, order. All right. Uh, items from council. Jacob? Oh, it's a town attorney.
I don't have anything there.
I looked at it and said council. Okay, items from council, Jacob?
I have nothing.
Have nothing, Mark?
Uh, no, just the car show. Um, I do have about five hundred dollars worth of, um, giveaway things coming.
Okay.
If we're gonna do like a first fifty, get a goodie bag or something like that, I don't know.
Nicole and he will be
Front on that.
On the car show, cause I know nothing about car shows.
Okay.
And, and usually what we've done too with that is, uh, we've had the DJ and it sounds like this DJ might not be able to do it or something.
What about Jacob or John?
John and Jacob, y'all will be the DJ. And what they usually do a lot of times too is they'll pull, uh, uh, tickets and give them tickets. And then they're so often just give them some of those little goodies that we collect.
Yeah, I have a
See, I think Nicole's planning instead of like every half hour, like do it every two hours or something, um, the giveaways. Cause she said she didn't wanna do stuff every half hour. Uh, but talk to her when she comes back and
Yeah, she'll be back tomorrow.
Yeah, cause I, I know that she's gonna take care of that and then I'm gonna pretty much take care of the, the festival.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we'll still help each other, but, you know.
I'm working on the music.
So that was September twenty, twenty five?
Now we're gonna do twenty seventh and twenty eighth.
Of September.
Yeah. That, that is one of our changes
Yeah.
That we need to put in the meds that, uh, uh, we're changing that to the twenty seventh and twenty eighth. That was a conflict with, uh, twenty, twenty five.
Another reason too is because, uh, we talked to the guy that normally does, normally did like the do-wop and stuff like that. And he said we should be pretty safe having it that late as far as being able to get cars in. Cause everybody else has already had theirs done by then.
Yeah. Okay, all righty. Uh, John, you think?
Uh-huh.
Melanie?
I have a whole list.
As I say, we got, uh, uh,
The yard sale is gonna move to the fourth of May because we did not realize that we had it on Mother's Day weekend when we first scheduled it. Cause everything's moved this year. So it's gonna be the fourth of May, uh, and everybody can put stuff out. Um, also the September twenty seventh and twenty eighth. And if we have anybody that wants to volunteer to help with that stuff, I mean, we'll have all kinds of stuff that you can help with. Um, help them give out prizes or just monitor or, you know, whatever. So we're always looking for help on that. Also, I wanna bring before council, um, and I know we just have to think about this, but raising the vendor's boost this year from twenty to twenty-five. That's still not a lot, but if they go anywhere else, they're paying more than that. They're paying anywhere from fifty one up. Um, so I just thought maybe it would help us as far as recouping some of our expenditures, especially for the bands and things like that. So you guys think about it and you see what, you know, what we can do about that.
Is that, is that, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Well, just go ahead and just, just go ahead and do that.
Okay. Cause I've already started contacting people. Right now I've got seven people that, uh, I'm sending out forms to that wanna participate. I just started this week, so, I mean, I think it's pretty good. Um,
The band, the bands, I pretty much raised a lot of money.
Yeah.
So we have paid, I don't think anything will ban, so. We've got three thousand already from culture and history. I'll get another five grand out of the county's budget.
Yeah, you did really good about doing that.
Yeah, some I'll get, uh, out of our new engineering company, I'll give them some money from there.
Okay. And I'm gonna also try to get Pepsi Company up again like we have every year. And that way we can get refreshments as far as the pop and stuff for the bands.
Yeah.
Um, also, this Friday is Dixie Highway. Come out and support them and it's five dollars for about three and a half hours. Um, they have good food, Charlie always say.
Is this Friday or next Friday?
Twenty second, this Friday. Or next Friday, I'm sorry, twenty second.
Yeah, twenty sixth, correct.
Twenty, twenty second.
Twenty of those.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, next Friday, I'm sorry. And, um, everybody, everybody needs to come out and try to support that. I know five dollars is five dollars, but you can't normally hear a decent band for that, you know. And Shirley always has plenty to eat as far as, you know, food and the prices aren't bad either, so. Um,
It's good for the town when you see Bell people here.
Yeah, cause a lot of them do.
We don't get a lot of Bell people.
Yeah, a lot of them are not. Um, they asked about, Clarence and some of them asked about raising the price to ten dollars. I do not think we should. Um, and the reason I don't think we should is because every place else is five dollars except Marmet. And Marmet's a little bit different. They have their own beat to the drum. But I think that most of the people that do come and have a good time, it's kind of stretching it for them to pay five dollars and pay for something to eat. And most of them are coming ways off, so I think we should just leave it at that. We're making the money to pay for the band and have a little bit left over. And that's, you know, that's what it's all about.
I don't know if y'all saw it or not, but, uh, the Stephanie and the old Mark Ford that we had last time.
Stephanie, the brother.
The drummer, which was Bill Lommer, he died yesterday.
Did he really?
Yeah, he worked for machinery for years.
Oh, wow.
He passed away.
Last week, wasn't it?
Um,
Which last week, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah, it lasted several days or so, but he, uh, he ate breakfast and everything.
And that, that's kind of odd, cause I had talked with him and he was gonna, he said he had a band that
They do, they're in it.
Yeah. Right by, he, he was, yeah. Um, other than that, just, you know, remember the yard sale.
Real, real quick while you set up, uh, there's a rain date. That's the eighteenth of May?
Uh, it's the next Saturday. It's the very next Saturday.
Isn't that the Mother's Day weekend?
Yeah, I think it's two weeks out.
Cause I, yeah, I thought that we did that originally, but then our original day was Mother's Day weekend, so we moved it up a week. So then, I think the rain date's still, I think, the eighteenth or something.
Rain date's the eighteenth.
Okay. So if it should rain on the fourth?
It'll be the eighteenth too.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was right.
Yep, that's true.
But sorry, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. And then also in May, Darren Cooper and the Mountain Gold Band will be out to play on Friday night, so. So, um, everybody needs to come out and support him too. He's pretty local. Actually, he's Shirley's nephew, nephew, and he does a really good job. Um, and that's, and that's, I think, all I have there.
I told Shirley, I said, the funny thing about it was when I was over at Recreation, back when we had the old city hall down there, I used to bring Frida Cooper over and sing. And then, uh, the old guys used to do the square dancing and everything else. We, we had square dances down there and everything.
Well, Darren told me that he was bringing his mom and that she would be prepared to sing this time. She was, and we kind of put her on the spot last time, but she did a good job.
Yeah, she sung many a times over there earlier then, yeah. But, all righty, Michael, how about you, sir?
I want to say thank you to everybody for voting me in.
Yeah, yeah, just, uh, we'll get you acclimated here and get everything together. Uh, get you set up. I think you saw Lynn earlier and, uh, so you're good there, so.
I'll get a little bit of information from you.
Yeah, yeah, you might, uh, uh, I'll get with you in a little bit. Get your cell phone. I've got your cell phone. I'll share that with everybody, but, uh, we, we do a little group text every now and then, just different things coming up or whatever, so. All righty, so we'll do that, and, uh. All righty, approval for visitors to address council. Okay, Melanie, can you go second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, Jacob. All those in favor, same time saying aye.
Aye.
All righty, and, uh, so first of all, let me just say again, Miss Blue and Mark appreciate your all those efforts tonight and, you know, like I said, get Shirley and see what we need to do and see what else we can do. And everything later on the, uh, beautification and anything we can do throughout Belle to kind of spruce it up and things like that. You've got a fairly hefty budget, that as long as John don't shut you off. But, uh, so to do some things and, uh, you know, make it look a little better and things like that, so. We'll go ahead and let you.
Okay.
Speak and.
Like I said, I just a withdraw, uh, Vice President April Holmes. I, I would have loved to been up here earlier, but sometimes it's better for us to kind of prove ourselves instead of coming up here and making a bunch of promises. So I hope you all seen that we're not here to cause trouble. We're not out there selling drugs or breaking into people's homes or anything like that. I know that's a concern whenever something like that moves in, so I wanted to give the time to let us kind of get acclimated. Uh, but I really want to come up here and thank you all. Uh, right now, we've got several people in that, see the, the house right here beside us? That's more of a controlled environment. That's like our first forty days, so you're not gonna see these guys out walking around the town or anything like that. Uh, they, they move together, they go to church together. It's more of a, um, a treatment center than would be a sober home, right? But, um, down the road, those are the guys that you, uh, you may see walking occasionally, riding the buses, working. Um, several of them work here in town. I've had a guy get a job down there at the Belle Chemical Plant. He graduated the program and, and he's still doing an extremely good job. Um, I'd seen the last year, I probably had seven guys graduate that program, and our program is not an easy program to make through whatsoever. Uh, but I've had seven guys be successful up here and a lot of that shit of town, well, just to thank you all for the environment that's up here. Uh, but the, the main reason I'm here is, is kind of like what you were up here for, uh. Uh, you saw our little fire on town about the grass cut. We're willing to do that. But if you all got any abandoned properties that you need help with, uh, uh, I know for, uh, St. Albans and the town of Canova and Dunbar, we kind of helped them with abandoned properties to cut the grass in the summers. Um, Canova, we're painting a few parking posts for them, just anything we can do to help out, uh. The, the big thing about recovery is giving back, a- and no matter where these guys were from, they were being burdens on society when we were out there using drugs, and that's just how we were. A- and the way that we give back is through community service like that. So, I mean, just anything that you all need help with, uh, I'm just coming up here really to say thanks and, and just offer any kind of help that we can give you all, so. Ninety-five percent of my guys are, are very good people. Uh, the majority, even like me, I was a registered nurse, had some surgeries, went down a bad road. I was able to pull myself out of it. Ninety-five percent of the people in my home are like that. They're good people. They either had poor circumstances or made some bad choices. You're gonna have your five percent that are there to cause trouble anywhere, but, um, never once do I kick them out in town like I don't want you all to think that I'm just, we're, we're nothing like what's across the river over there. Uh, if anything, the only time that I would ever put somebody out, the Belle Police would be called because they would be behind them or something like that. And, and that's very few and often in between, but anytime somebody's discharged, we transfer them to another program. We're not letting them walk the streets of Belle or anything like that. And the worst case scenario, if they don't want to go to another program, we take them down to the homeless shelter in Charleston there. So I just really wanted to come up here and boost myself. I, I've got business cards and, and anything we can do to help and strengthen the relationship, uh, I'm the man to talk to. So.
Sounds good. How, how about, uh, the Woods family?
Yeah, I, I, that, that, I, that's the, the one guy above me, uh, Mr. Wood. Now Larry Woods retired, the, the.
That's the old man.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and then Wes, he's, uh, he's the executive director there. Okay.
Absolutely, yeah. But I, I, I'm right below him and.
That's who, that's who came up when we did the.
Both of them.
Probably the. Both of them came up when we did all the meetings and everything.
Well, whenever we first came up here, uh, we were really, that was about our third or fourth house we opened. And, and now we're the third largest program in the state. Uh, we, we're in three different counties and we run an extremely tight ship and, and I, I just hope you all see. Don't look at the media and think everybody's the same, basically. Uh, we, 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 we try to run an extremely tight ship up here.
And I, I agree with you with the place across the river.
Yeah, yeah, we, we're, uh, yeah, I just, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm part of their community group over there, uh, and, uh, you know, they, they really got some problems.
I completely understand.
And, uh, you know.
But I, I have a guy that's, uh, he does the sketches, like the sketching, different things. A- and I'll give you my current email address and I'd love to send you some of the work he does. Really, really good, really, really good.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds good, yeah. But, uh, yeah, we appreciate it, and you know, we were kind of, and, and you know, I know I've been here ever since, and most of us here other than maybe, uh, uh, Mark for a little while, and, and now Michael just came on.
Yep.
But, uh, when we first, you know, uh, got a call from Woods family, you know, and said, hey, we want to come up and talk to you, and we were like, oh, wow. So we were kind of skeptical and like, hey, you know, first of all, you, you bought the place down there.
Yep.
And John and I live right out behind it.
Okay.
And, uh, and then, uh, and then they ended up saying they was gonna buy this place. We were like, oh, you know? And, uh, but I'll be honest, I mean, you know, what we fought in our minds to begin with.
Yeah.
Versus what's really happened.
Yep.
Totally changed.
A- and I, that's why I really wanted to change, is that stigma and that look like, I mean, like I said, I got some good guys, and I think the more the town sees us out doing things.
Yeah.
Better that stigma's gonna get.
Yeah, I agree.
And like I said, with your neighbor you got going on, uh, he, he doesn't actively have to be on drugs for one of us to go down there and talk to him, and, and us being who we are, we might be able to relate a little bit more, not like an authority figure coming down there.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, I'd be willing to go down there.
They won't put him on the defensive as well.
Yes.
Yeah, he, he's got a, uh, a Corvette in the garage, so he beat the heck out of it for the, for the front hood and everything else.
Well, just from what I was hearing, it sounds like.
It was a nice, it was a nice Corvette.
He had a Corvette. He's got a Corvette.
He's got a Corvette. He even took a hammer to the aluminum engine.
Yeah, oh, man.
That's not probably a good shape.
Exactly, exactly.
But, yeah, I can give you, uh, the address, you, you know, meet you there or whatever. Obviously, right behind.
I got you, I got you.
And before that, he was a real person.
Yeah, exactly.
He was really a, and we didn't want to treat him like a wild animal. We would like, yeah, get some help.
I get it, I get it.
And he was one of our dog problems. He actually just let his dogs out.
Yep.
They actually captured him, brought him back to him, he let him out again. And then the third time we actually, or when we caught him again next time, third time out, uh, we actually took him to the animal shelter. And then, uh, the guy with the U-Haul drove into the animal shelter and then right after that, well, the one dog that got hurt out there was one of his dogs.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, but the dog was fine and everything. They kind of nursed him back and everything.
Yep.
And then the lady went down and actually, uh, took him. And they actually, uh, two weeks ago, I think it was, they actually took him to Myrtle Beach.
Oh, man.
So, you know, the dogs hadn't ever been out there.
I hear you.
So it's pretty neat, you know, going from that environment to going to Myrtle Beach.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, uh, yeah, I know, you know, all the ladies down on Ari and, yeah, they keep tabs on them and everybody else.
Got it.
So they were, they were letting me know, said, hey, the dog's in good shape now, everything's fine.
There you go, okay.
Uh, but then when you let them out, I mean, they ran from here to.
Yeah.
Uh, the old walk-in machinery, boy scout and everything else, so. But, uh, but no, we appreciate it and we, you know, sorry to have those preconceptions in our mind, but.
They, they give a little bit of time and, and prove ourselves, and, and that's what we wanted. And we, we weren't actually speaking a whole lot about it at once.
I've got a couple of friends live across the river, uh, beside that.
Yeah, yeah.
Out there over there, and they're like, hey, I wish you'd moved somewhere else.
Uh, 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 we, uh.
It, it is not.
You're a jitter chatter.
It is not good.
Yeah.
And, uh, but I said, well, you know, we, we didn't know what we were gonna get either, but it's had its fingers in it.
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, how about anything else, anybody?
I, I have a question.
Uh-huh.
I, I was looking on Facebook and there seemed to be a lot of break-ins into cars. Did we ever catch anybody?
Uh, not really, uh, but the thing is, some, and Willie, I think you all were one, right?
One, he on my street.
Okay.
But I think most of them have been left unlocked. Uh.
Oh.
And, and, you know, the police will tell everybody, lock your cars at night. You know, we have some people that walk the streets, and we've got a couple that we, uh, I'll just say we've worked on. And, uh, but, uh, we haven't been able to corral them totally yet, but, you know, we're still working on.
Something like that was just like a.
Just like a.
Like a one-week span?
Span.
I mean, I don't know, not the only time, I'm just saying.
Most of it, they were just ransacked. It wasn't like.
They took out the registration. Didn't get the sticker off the bags with the registration a little bit.
Somebody did get like their, their birth certificates and that kind of stuff, so. Everything. He had had it in his pocket for some, something he had to do, left it in there.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't do a paper.
I, um, there, we actually felt a clothes hanger that was hooked underneath some flowers in our yard. Um, I don't know how long it's been there. Michelle was out there weeding and, uh, she said, well, look at this. And it looked like someone, they were jimmying through a window. I looked at camera, my cameras for four or five days. I didn't see anything. But I, I, I don't know if that's how they were using it to try to get into cars. Very rarely can you use a coat hanger now to get into a car, but anyway, we did find one, so.
Tell me about the sound system. Is it gonna be installed or is it already installed or what?
What's that?
The sound system.
For?
The one that town's getting, getting the town getting the sound system.
We, we got, we got just a portable job.
Oh.
We've got the big one that, uh, Thursday night people use. That, that's ours too. That, that long stand.
We didn't replace that.
Yeah, we didn't replace that. That's the big one.
All right.
And then the one we bought was just the portable deal that we had before.
Like we use it to dinners and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause the one that's in there, I mean, it was five, six, seven thousand dollars, I think, with everything, 'cause they bought, you know, the big mixer board. And big, you know, speakers and all that. But that's the one the Thursday night guys use. And then the one we got, it just has a couple of small speakers and a couple.
Sure.
Uh, microphones, uh, you know, things like that, so. Even the mics we've got on the big system will work on this one. It'll plug into it and everything, so. But this one was just a small one that we've just used for the dinners, uh, we've used for the school, the grand school graduations, things like that. The one we had, the, the mixing board on it's pretty much just toast and, uh. So it, it, that's what we replaced. I mean, we, we've got, how much was it? Twelve, twelve hundred dollars.
I, I didn't know if it was for the bands or not.
No, 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 no. No, they'll use, the, the bands, we tell them they've gotta bring their own stuff, the Friday night bands.
That's fine.
The Thursday night bands, they've got some of their own stuff, but then that mixing board and everything they use actually belongs to the town. Yeah.
Some bands wanted to use that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't ever say, you know, if they did want to use it, we could get it out.
I was just asking, I'm, it's okay.
Yeah, and then, and then last year for the fair, we took it out front and hooked it up out there, yeah, uh, for the festival that we did, and, uh.
I was sitting when we porch the other day, I'm gonna give somebody some roses. This gentleman came up and he saw a orville mowing grass. And he came, came up and wanted to go to get more grass, see anything around our house. I thought it was one of his gentlemen.
No.
And I appreciated that.
Yeah.
He said, if you, I said, he gets his exercise that way. I said, but if I ever need you, I'm gonna call you.
Yeah.
Figuring nice.
Get one of his cards. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
There you go. If you need him, you can call him.
Yeah.
And, um, that'll work.
Yeah, we had at the end of Central, I think, the other day, so they took a picture.
That was one of the boys that lives out here in the apartments that we were talking about down here, uh, right by the old forest. And, uh, that we were talking about earlier. The one you said, and the one I said's got some problems there. Uh, that little boy that lives in one of them apartments, uh, actually was one of them in Central. And, uh, he went down there and said, hey, do you need your grass mowed? It lives up, up the street from your old place. That's why, just three or four places.
Yeah.
Up by Dr. Perry.
Okay.
And, uh, and, uh, the lady told him, and the thing is, this lady, her husband actually goes out mowing grass. All over the place. I mean, he goes out and about and everything else, but didn't buy his own grass.
Yeah.
So the little boy said, yeah, oh, I'll be back from my house, get my lawnmower, come back. So he did, went over to the house, got the lawnmower brought back and mowed the grass.
This gentleman was out picking up garbage.
That's probably one of his guys.
When he stopped by my house, I was sitting on the front door. It's one of those morning days.
Yeah, yeah, should give him a glass of tea?
Yeah, but I could have. I keep, I stay all the night.
Give him, give him, at least you're all giving these to him.
Dave, I did forget something.
I'm sorry you've had your chance.
Um, summer help. Were you doing summer help this year for the street department?
I, I tried to find a boy the other day and he didn't want to do it, so. I'm looking for a couple, so we'll see what we can find here soon. I mean, normally we, we'll kick them off, you know, after school's out, so. We'll look at it, see what we can find and go from there, so we'll bring to council. Anybody else, anything?
The recreational center, I thought I'd ask you. I know you know it. When you go in there and you go through the gate, and then you keep on going down towards the water, and then there's another gate. Who, who opens those? Because some, usually they're open, but sometimes you go down there and.
You're talking about the playground?
The playground?
No, at the locks.
The recreational area down there where you can go fishing right next to the water after, after the dam?
Uh, it's, it's open twenty-four hours a day.
You're talking about the locks?
No, the gates, so you can't drive through there.
Now, that gate on that lot is an extra lot, but the fishing pier is over to the right by the creek.
Are you talking about the fishing pier down by the locks and dam?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Army Corps of Engineers, uh, takes care of everybody.
And when it's flooded, like when the water's up, they do lock those gates.
Yeah, it's like a month ago.
Yeah, if the water's up, if they let like water out from the dams and stuff, they will lock those gates down there, so you can't drive down.
Yeah, now the one we've got is on the other end of Belle, down by the creek. And, uh, you can go all the way out there, but there's no fence or anything. You just walk out there and fish.
And those tra- are there trails out there?
Yeah, there's some walking trails and everything else, and what else there?
Is that trail?
You're talking, you're back at the locks again?
Yeah, the locks.
There's not really a trail, but there's a, a road that goes all the way around the mound that they use for maintenance, but it's not officially a trail. We are trying to get a walking trail put in there that, uh, even be accessible by bikes or, um, wheelchair, but it's been a struggle. But we are still trying to do that.
Yeah, I knew she'd been involved with that.
Yeah.
You can walk back there though. I wouldn't know when, right now's the perfect time, but when you're starting to get the greens and the weeds, you don't want to go back in. It's not taken care of as well.
Do you see people by their piss on that back part?
That's nasty.
Yeah. Now, Rick Gray down on the other end of Belle, that's on the sanitary board, Rick goes out there and walks all over the place.
Yeah.
And, uh, he's a big bird watcher.
Or pictures, so he's out there.
He's sitting by even.
Yeah, and then down at the.
It's called, uh, Friends of Mount Pollywone. It's a group that's trying to get people down there.
Then down at the, uh, Locks property, there's birdhouses down there, there's birdhouses out on the locks, uh, dam out in that area. Uh, down here at the end of Belle, uh, they. Uh, down here at the end of bail, uh, they put birdhouses down there on town, you know, where we've got the fishing pier and all that.
Okay.
And then even over in the park area that we've been talking about, and we've been trying to get Diamond Cham Rock or Occidental for years now. You know, they've been putting birdhouses over there, they put a couple butterfly habitats and everything else. There was one out on the main road, and then there was one inside, and the one inside, they said, well, we've been down there looking, but we really haven't seen a lot of butterflies, so. You know, I don't think he did as well as what they thought it was going to be, so they said they were going to redo them, but, uh, don't think he finished them up.
I haven't seen it, they did, uh, neither they cleaned them or you cleaned them, I'm not sure, but.
I think them guys cleaned them and, uh, but they said.
They were pretty.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, they had like spring flowers out.
They were beautiful, yes.
They were pretty, and, uh, it was a good beautification area at both places. And, uh, but, you know, now, and, and, you know, like I said, the guy I've been talking to at Occidental, you know, he said, hey, we're going to give you the property out by the pier and fishing pier and all that, now they say they're going to do a ninety-nine year lease. The property over in the park, you know, we said, hey, we'd like to, you know, get that property sooner or later. You know, when I was a kid, we used that as a football field and everything else, so, you know, and, but there's still a couple wells in there, but they've got to actually make sure they're all cleaned up, so. Yes, I see, you know, their circumstance, we don't want anybody to get sick.
Right.
You know, and somebody sue, you know, them or us or whoever, so, but, uh, that it?
What's supposed to be on the line between us this weekend, the town health and some of the people that don't have a name?
Uh, what we do, if there's, if they know of something, you know, they can bring a truck by or something. But, but it's probably, I mean, we just haven't had the manpower to do it big time, you know. And the other thing is, is we donate a truck, you know, to them every, every cleanup. And so we, we pay overtime for two people, uh, we, this past payday, yesterday's payday, we had two people on there and we had ten hours apiece overtime. So, you know, that's pretty much what we've been able to do, and then, like I said, we go to all four of the cleanups and, you know, put in a garbage truck, but the thing is, when you bring a garbage truck in, they want it cleaned, and they want a clean truck, they don't want anything yet. And so they've actually gone sometimes and actually looked at the truck before you ever put it in service there. And just to make sure that you didn't bring stuff in, that, you know, the townies will pay a little bit, and, uh, but now, I can say that we've actually, uh, uh, gotten a couple of passes for the, uh, the landfill, uh, because that's run by Canal County Planning, and I sit on that board, so I found a couple passes, a couple of, uh, through some people at the county. And, uh, so we've actually dumped a couple truckloads after that.
Yeah, I know the house behind us, they've got a couch and all the water all sitting against it, behind the house, we hid in all the fences.
Is that your, your relative or?
No, the one straight behind where the garage is.
Oh, yeah.
On the lower side of Perry's house.
Yeah, 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 uh, but, uh, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we've tried to do, you know, if somebody sets something out, we'll get it, take it. But, you know, I think it's probably one of our jewels in bail, is being the stuff we take and, and pick up and everything else, so. You know, and I think everybody around knows that.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, you know, we're trying to struggle to keep the budget going, right?
Right.
And, uh, you know, we've done pretty well so far, but, uh, you know, does, does the twenty-dollar bill a month need to be raised? Probably does, uh, does the sanitary bills need to be raised? You know, we've already been criticized through DEP that we need another, uh, worker down at the plant. Uh, today we had the sanitary board meeting, our income for the, uh, bail sanitary board today was three thousand nine hundred and I think ten dollars. Uh, was our excess earnings today, uh, for last month, and, uh, so it's not great. Uh, we're actually, to even end up getting this grant of the two and a half million, right now we're eligible for two million, but they're saying the fashion engineering today says you may want to look at a slight increase to bump that up so that we can get two and a half million. But the thing is, you know, right now we've got forty, forty-five dollars, forty-two dollars, uh, minimum fee.
Forty, I think. Uh, forty or forty-two?
Is it forty?
It's forty.
Forty, forty-two, whatever it is, forty, forty-two dollars right now.
Mine's always more than that.
Yeah, mine's always more than that, mine, mine only ever gets a forty.
I think it is forty.
Yeah, is it forty?
I think it's forty.
So, you know, whatever it is now, I mean, that probably does need to be raised, you know, because right now, I mean, I can tell you right now, if we had to put on that full-time worker, if he ever come back and said he don't find us, they'd done it, yeah, but they keep considering it, they say. Uh, but if they'd ever do that, you know, our bills would probably be fifty-five dollars, you know, and, uh, you know, I hate to say that, but. Uh, it, it's not great, you know, in, in sewer rigs and, and just keeping everything going. I mean, with what we put in the plant, uh, back in seventeen to nineteen, I mean, we've got, you know, eight, eight or nine million dollars in that plant with the lawn, lawn mowers, and, uh, you know, we've got a forty-year loan going, you know, so it's got to be paid back. Uh, if we did all the work in bail, like I said, uh, Triads said it'd be twenty million dollars before COVID, now it's probably forty or fifty. If we went back and did all the work for, you know, sewer lines and things. So we got, I mean, there's going to be some challenges here in the coming year, and, uh, you know, or, or somebody's going to pay some more money, you know. Alrighty, do we have emotional adjournment?
Through move.
Through move, we have second.
Second.
Second, Mark, all those in favor, see if I've seen that?